Can you believe the end of that game?
All right, good evening. It is Tuesday, November 11th. Happy Veterans Day to those that it applies. It is 6:30. This is the time and place for our regular meeting of the Northern Lebanon School Board of Directors. I do call this meeting to order. Director Fowler, would you leave us in flag salute, moment of silence?
Why do we choose to define United States as one nation, under God, indivisible, and omnipotent, sovereign and just.
Mrs. Hartman, may I please have a roll call vote? Roll call, please, sorry.
Director Blau?
Here.
Director England?
Here.
Director Fowler?
Present.
Director Klein? Director Kreiser?
Present.
Director Moyer?
Here.
Director Murray?
Present.
Vice President Williams?
Here.
President Nam?
Present.
Eight present, one absent.
Great, thank you. Okay, so tonight we will start with presentations, and I see that Nathan, you are here. We look forward to hearing your report.
There you go. Hello? There we go. Good evening, everybody. Since I spoke to you last, the Powderpuff Game took place and resulted in a senior class win. We've only revamped this event last year, so we're excited to see it continue and have student interest. Some of you might have seen me at the trunk-or-treat. I think that was about a week or two ago. We had a good time. Student Council organized a table, and I think we saw about 500 kids show up, so we are very happy with the results. This time of year is pretty slow for us, so that's all I have for tonight, but stay warm.
Thank you. Good report, appreciate it. Okay, High School Students of the Month, I'd like to announce our Kalen Harmon and Casey Wymer. Neither are here. And the Middle School Student of the Month is Lexi Beishore. So those, we do have letters of commendation for them that we'll make sure they get. Gary, anything else for presentations? Okay, then Superintendent's report.
Okay, we're going to go in a little bit different order. Dr. Reese has to attend a different meeting in the district later. Do you have a construction update?
Just that the transitions have occurred, and we're into the final phase. Yes, we are into the final phase of construction and, or renovation. And so this will take us up through pretty much the end of the project, and this is, this would be the old sixth grade area. If you remember where sixth grade was, it would be, if you go back far enough, it was where District Office was back that many years ago. And that, that'll bring us up to the end. We had some conflict with some bathrooms, but that all got worked out, and, and the moves went extremely well. Our maintenance crew moved a record number of classrooms. They, they've even built custom trailers to use to move the student desks throughout the building. I said, "Well, it's too bad that it took us five years to, to get to that point, but we're now a very efficient machine." So much so that we've talked about, maybe the other districts in the county that are going through renovation might want to rent this equipment from us, so we'll see where that goes. Anyhow, things are going well. Thank you.
Thank you for the report.
And there's no auxiliary gym.
Yeah.
Gone. So, okay. Ms. Martin, you have a presentation for tonight.
I do, thanks. And I have some slides, really short, just a few slides to keep us on focus here. Okay, well, just like we are nearing the final phase of construction, we're nearing the final phase of financing construction, thankfully, as well. So I wanted to give you a quick update. I think you can all recall back in February, we had a discussion, and we moved some money from General Fund over to the construction, or Capital Projects Fund, and we said we will be back in the fall, and we will have a plan to close this out, and we'll make some more decisions there. We talked about how there's many moving parts, and there still are, but we have a few of those that I think we can narrow them down and make some decisions that we'll need to, going forward, to wrap up this, the financial end of this construction. If we go to the next slide. So before we do that, I just wanted to go over with you all, sorry, now I'm really nervous about being loud enough, so I keep moving my microphone. I'm going to be eating it soon, but, um, okay. So I wanted to wrap up and show you where we are at with the end of fiscal year for June 2025. The auditors are pretty much done, they are issuing us our final draft here. We just, so I do have estimated on here, just in case they make any last-minute revisions, but we're pretty close to knowing where we're at. So we will go over that quickly. So revenues for fiscal year '25, we exceeded budget. We did very well with our revenues. As you can see in that top line there, our local came in high, so it was mainly due to our real estate taxes. It was the current real estate taxes. We had a lot of delinquent paid in that were above budget as well, for what we typically budget for delinquent taxes. And then, I'm sure you're aware that when you buy or sell real estate, there's a transfer tax, and the school district gets that. That was also above budget, pretty high for this year, with some sales that happened. Also, in local income, we had the interest income, which, and these numbers are above what was budgeted. So $652,000, almost $653,000 of interest income, above what was budgeted. We had about $1.2 million total in interest income alone for district last year, which is amazing, and one of the best years we've, well, by far the best year we've ever had since I've been here. That was due to the fact that we had the sale of the four buildings, money, and interest rates were also favorable for us. So those were two areas which did extremely well for the district. And also, even though we didn't, we went above for last year's budgeting, we didn't flatline budget for the '24-'25 year in state funding. We did get additional state funding, and that came in $620,000 above budget. And I keep telling you guys that our federal funding is going down and decreasing, and it actually is, but last year we still had a little bit of ESRS that trickled in, so that's what you see up there, that was above budget for our federal area. And we are completely done with ESRS now. That was the last little bit of it that just came after the fiscal year for '24-'25 started. So that is where we did with revenues. That's kind of like a high-level analytical summary of it. And then we're going to move to expenses on the next slide. And expenses were kind of, there was no significant variance in the budget. We were almost at a $50 million budget for expenses, and we had about $100,000 off, which is pretty commendable for where we lined up with our expenses. The February transfer, I had just previously mentioned it, where we transferred $6 million from the General Fund over to our capital funds, project funds. I just want to remind you that that occurred, because now when we go to the next slide, you will see that our ending fund balance actually went down in the General Fund, but that was just because we transferred that money over there. And you can see where that occurred on that middle line there, where it says, "The assigned fund, Capital Projects, went from 9.2 to 3.3," and that is because we transferred over that $6 million. So this is where we are at with our General Fund, ending fund balance, as of the end of '24-'25. So the non-spendable, that is from the, we have to keep that on the books, and that is just due to the Fredericksburg sale when we did that, and the money that we will be showing as not an expense for the exchange with yellow breaches. So then we have the committed fund, which is our healthcare fund, which we can only use if healthcare expenses go above budget, and we decide that we want to use some of those funds to cover those costs. And then we have assigned, which is our capital projects within the General Fund. And then we have unassigned, which is now currently sitting at about $7.2 million. So we have a fairly healthy ending fund balance in our General Fund right now, and that is all illustrated up there. If there's any questions on that, and fiscal year '24-'25, you can ask those now if anyone has any. Okay, we can move on to the next one, and we'll definitely have time for discussion at the end if you need. So the construction, the estimation for the secondary completion is still about $6 million is what we owed to general contractors. And if you recall, there were some things like the sidewalk that aren't done, you know, so we kind of got estimates for all of those things and wrapped them all up, and it's about $6 million yet to close out everything that we will need. And as you can recall, we have some money still tied up in escrow. We still have $1.6 million in escrow just for the elementary school loan. So total with the elementary and the secondary project is $3.1 million tied up in Bethel escrow. So while that is our money, as you can tell with the elementary and how long it takes to get everything released back to us, and all the things we have to go through with engineering, and just to make sure that we have everything completed correctly, it takes a while. So while we have $3.1 million still in our Capital Projects Fund, we can't really access that. So we need to find that, or we need to get, come up with a total $6 million to finish out the construction, and then we'll get our $3.1 million back later. The funds that are in, currently in the construction accounts, that you can see on the current bank account balances, those will be used and pretty much emptied out by, in mid-December to pay the current bills. So, you know, we are at a point now where we need to make some decisions and figure out how to, we want to move forward to fund construction for going forward. So, next slide, thanks. So one of the recommendations that we came up with is we can borrow $3 million, and now this won't be going through a bond. What we'll do is we'll float it out to banks. Brad Remming will come back and help us with this. And basically, it's kind of, we come back and we find who's willing to give us the $3 million at the best interest rate and the best repayment terms. So that's, like I said, Brad Remming will come back and help us with that. He did come up with a proposal, which you guys can pass around if anyone wants to see it. He did one where it's $3 million payback, and one where it's $5 million payback in different years. Can I keep one just to reference it? Thanks. On the side that's coming around, there's one side, that's the $3 million borrowing, that's Northern London colors. Kind of blew my mind with how he did this. The $5 million on the back in Christmas colors. If you just want to look over those and see what our payments would be. And then, and to get the other half of the $6 million, we would transfer $3 million over from the General Fund. And that was where I had just showed you, where we have about $12 million balance. And then when we start getting that escrow money back from the township, we'll just put that money back over to the General Fund, you know, to kind of recover that $3 million that we transferred over, and we can use that for future expenses that we need to do capital projects here in the school that come up, and also depending on what we decide with CTC construction, you know, it might soften some of our increased bond payments for that project in the coming years. Okay?
I'll just add, and there's some flexibility there. You could borrow four and transfer two, you could borrow two and transfer four.
Yes.
We felt a split down the middle was a good way to go. We are taking into consideration, as LeAnn just mentioned, a possible CTC renovation that we would have to contribute to. Puts us in a little better shape to handle that, depending on the timing of that, which we will go over. I will mention that the, we'll have to do, we'll have to make a decision about this and be ready to go for December. So if you have feedback, please reach out to LeAnn, or questions, please reach out to LeAnn. January, we will have our larger, the first meeting, we do, we only have one meeting, but it's the second meeting. The first meeting will be the financial workshop, the budget workshop that we typically do, where LeAnn will get into things in depth. We'll look at the tenure projection at that point in time, we'll look at the, by then we should have some pretty good numbers for CTC, assuming that they go ahead with the renovation, to be able to get into some depth with you then, and then the board can, can talk about and decide at the January regular meeting if we want to set that percentage early like we did last year. I think we set it in February last year, which actually worked out relatively well, except that we never had a clue what the state was going to do.
We still don't.
And we still don't, although they are, well, I'll talk about this.
They're supposed to meet tonight, but yes.
They're meeting at 5:30, I think. The Senate was meeting at 5:30, which I heard is a good sign, so.
And I can go over the timeline, I'm sorry, I kind of glossed over that part. But so next, in December, what we'll be doing is putting the parameters down on, for you guys to approve, a parameters resolution where it will say, "We authorize Brad Remming to go out to banks and to, you know, get us the $3 million, a loan up to $3 million at these interest rates, and to get us the best interest rate." So we will basically be authorizing Brad Remming to go out and do that for us. And then we would, also in December, if we decide to transfer over the $3 million, or whatever amount from the General Fund, I will, we will have that resolution on it as well, just like you did in February, we transferred over $6 million. We would need board approval again to transfer over the $3 million. And then in January, we would come back, and Brad would have everything done and final for the loan. So then you would actually be approving the loan documents at your January board meeting. Afterwards, we would get those all signed and be done, so that we hopefully would have the money in January to go forward and finish this all out, because construction's supposed to end in February, and as we know, those contractors will be asking for their payments.
LeAnn, can you remind me, and if you don't know, that's okay, but what the CTC was suggesting?
Yeah, it is really, really up in the air.
Oh, okay, okay.
I have a meeting, I have, yeah, I have a meeting on Friday with the superintendents. And then, I mean, to be truthful, there are two districts that really would like to calculate how it's paid for differently, very differently. And to those two districts, it makes an incredible difference from a financial standpoint. Makes a difference to us, too, but not nearly as much, so we're talking a couple million dollars for them. Those two districts are meeting afterwards, at my encouragement, on Friday, to try to come to narrow that gap, so the rest of us can even participate in the discussion, because right now, the rest of us don't. We're, we're so far in the middle compared to those two, that it doesn't matter. So they're going to have a conversation, hopefully come to a compromise, and then we'll have a better feel for what our number is. We're looking at somewhere between 1.1 and 1.5 million if they go with the renovation, one of the, one of the ones in the middle, not the one where they keep the same layout and just renovate and add a little bit of space, and not the brand-new one. If they go with one of the ones in the middle, where it's a kind of a mixture between keeping some and renovating, new construction and renovating other pieces, then we're sitting at 1.1 to 1.5, depending on the formula that is agreed upon in the end.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
LeAnn, could you put the fund balance slide back up? And LeAnn, what's, could you remind us what our authorized index is for this coming year?
Yes, 4.1%.
Okay, thank you.
Or, might actually be 4.2%. I have to go back, I don't know why that just got fuzzy on me, but it's right above 4%.
It was 4.8 last year, correct?
Yeah, and then the share, the index was 3.5, and I believe we were at 4.2.
I think you're right, but, and I think it's projected to go down again.
Yes.
Next year.
So can you talk through the unassigned fund balance again? How we got from 5 to 7.2?
Right, so that would just be, we are adding, after this year, about $2 million into there. That was from the revenues.
Okay, okay.
Being higher.
Got you.
I brought out the highest ones on that first slide and showed you where all they were, and why we got to about additional $2 million.
That makes sense.
And like I said, the expenses were kind of level, so it was just the extra income from last year is what added that there.
Okay, thanks.
I got one question. Was there, what are the interest rates that are, do you know what they were based on the paper that you handed out, or any idea, a ballpark or anything?
I don't, and he doesn't have the numbers on here. They might have been in the email, and I, I don't want to say them off the top of my head and, and misspeak to them.
And do you know, would there be any penalty for early payment?
That is one of the questions we would definitely ask and have him put in there, that there would not be, just because we would have that money coming back from the escrow, that if we wanted to put that towards this, that's something that we would like to consider.
If, again, if you have questions, thoughts, please reach out over the next couple weeks. It's not too long before our December meeting, especially with Thanksgiving, so sooner rather than later, if possible. I had a couple more things here. I did mention already the state budget, that they are meeting, and signs are hopeful that that may get resolved. You hearing the same thing?
I heard really negative news yesterday, so you have one more.
This was, I saw this at 5 o'clock. We got an email from Sherri Smith at PASA.
That's good, then.
That they were meeting at 5:30, Senate was meeting at 5:30.
That's better than what I heard yesterday.
Yeah. Also wanted to just update that I will be sending a message out to our family members sometime next week, probably toward the end of next week, a little bit of a holiday message, and also just a state-of-the-NL kind of thing with our focus for the year and how that's been going. Just wanted to get that out there. And then also, it is hard to believe, but we are about a week and a half, two weeks, I guess, a little short of two weeks from parent-teacher conferences, so those are coming up, along with the end of the trimester for elementary. So moving right along, and one last reminder, the December meeting, we have one meeting, however, we have reorg, reorganization that night. It starts at 5:30 with the meeting following right afterwards. And if you have nominations for positions, you can let Ann know, or you can nominate that night. Unless there's any objections, we'll probably ask, he's doing, he does such a great job of being temporary president for five minutes, we'll probably ask Director Klein to do that again, since he's been doing that the past few years. But we'll have that next time. Congratulations. I know it was a little, not quite exciting, because it was unopposed, but congratulations to the four folks that were reelected. And that's the end of my report.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
Just to clarify, or do you roll right from your 5:30 reorg into the regular meeting?
We did, yeah.
Okay, then we might have some help for you then.
Okay, great. Okay. Great, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is public comment. Public was asked to provide information by 3 o'clock today if they had any input. There is no public input for this evening, so we will move immediately to the items for board action. Notice was given for this meeting in accordance with Act 84 of 1986. By notice of the President, the following action requires voice vote. All votes in favor shall be stated with "aye" or "yes." All votes opposed shall be stated with "nay" or "no." All members abstaining shall state "I abstain when prompted." Votes will be recorded in the minutes as unanimous roll call vote unless there are any votes in opposition or abstention. If necessary, the President may... If necessary, the President may subsequently call for a roll call vote to be recorded in the minutes. First item is adoption of this evening's agenda. Everyone has had an opportunity to review that, is our motion to adopt this evening's agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Director Murray is there, second? Thank you, Director England, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of adopting this evening's agenda, please indicate with an "aye" or "yes."
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, my vote's also "yes," so the motion carries unanimously. We'll move to the consent agenda. This was established last week at the committee meeting, it is a fairly robust consent agenda. Any comments, Dr. Messinger?
Only the one, I had sent the name, I think we had, you talked about it last week, I'd sent the name of the one addition to you, but we also this morning had someone withdraw their name, so that was, that person was removed.
Okay, any, any questions regarding the consent agenda this evening? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to adopt this evening's consent agenda?
Motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you, Director Blau, second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Kreiser, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please indicate with an "aye" or "yes."
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, my vote is also "yes," so that motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on.
Okay, instructional approvals, we have a, an overnight trip for girls wrestling scheduled for January 2nd to January 3rd in Williamsport.
Okay, questions? Okay, there a motion to approve 10.1?
Motion to approve 10.1.
Thank you, Director Blau, second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Murray, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving item 10.1, please indicate with an "aye" or "yes."
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, my vote's also "yes," so that motion also carries unanimously. And then we go immediately to our discussion calendar.
Yeah, there were, well, there were two, yeah, yeah, I think that should have been HR. Coaches were moved to discussion from last week's meeting, as was the career planner, I think they were discussed last week. If there's any questions, I'll answer those. And the only other thing that we put on, if you saw my email yesterday, we have an AG advisory committee or OAC committee, which Dr. Reese is headed to shortly. We have an audit this year and it's been, the members that are listed there have been members on the committee with the exception of Tiffany Hogg, who is taking the place of Laura Wimmer. So we replaced Laura Wimmer with Tiffany Hogg. And then, to be truthful, it's been a long time since these folks have been board approved, some of them, some, half of them were board approved last April, but the other half back before I could actually find minutes for them, even though they've been on forever. So I thought it was just best to get everybody board approved and so those names are there. It is not Director Moyer, but we have another Ben Moyer who serves on this AG advisory committee, but they're listed there for you to approve as well.
All right, very good. So we do have those three items in 13.1, 13.2, and 13.3. Any questions on any of those three items? Okay, if not, I will receive a motion to approve items 13.1 through 13.3. Thank you, Director England, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Blau, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please indicate with an "aye" or "yes."
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, my vote is also a "yes," so that is unanimous. All right, thank you. We will move then to the reports. First report is CTC. Director Klein is not here, Director Moyer, do you have a report?
I was not there, so we had to go to super semester.
Great.
The big topic is the renovation. They did have their feasibility study presented, it is online if you're interested, but that's the big topic right now for them. And the articles of agreement between the six school districts have not been updated since 1996. Saxon dump is actually going through those now to provide any updates in the articles that need to be done because of code changes. And then those will be reapprued along with whatever funding formula for the renovation is agreed upon, which we were hoping in, for November, but it's not going to be till December at this point.
Thank you. Any questions, CTC? Okay, hearing none, Director Kreiser, legislative.
As of the little after 6 o'clock, there was news reports that there was a budget deal that was released, so, yes.
Fantastic.
It's.
What are the details?
They don't have any details, but apparently a deal has been breached that will be presented to lawmakers.
Wow, okay.
It's showing 50.1 billion, a budget deal.
Okay, so we'll get about 10 billion of that?
Yeah.
I was just gonna say that.
Great, okay, that's good news. Okay, anything else for legislative?
Nope, none of the committees have met, so.
Great, timely report, thank you. Okay, Director Blau, PSBA.
Yes, in October, I was able to go to the PSBA meeting that they have annually and they have school board members there from across the state of Pennsylvania. And what we vote on there is, it's kind of like the last process of where, well, let me start where it starts. Earlier in the year, school board members and the PSBA were allowed to give ideas of what we would like the state to help us with. So as far as what they told me, the school boards didn't have anything suggest, which I thought maybe we could, that's an area we can improve in and I can be better about the dates and where we, when we need to submit that, because that's earlier in the year. But the PSBA, they came up with four points that they wanted to help the state to help us with. And it was everything from charter school reform to the mental health needs of the kids, to how financially they want the state to help us. And it seems like most of it was finances, they would, they say mental health, but then they want like the finances to help with the mental health or, like they were talking about the lunches and they want free lunches for all the students. So I might just email this to all you, there's a whole, it's a lot to go through and it's very wordy. But I think what we could be really good on is maybe coming up with ideas on something we could submit on areas that we want to see improved for next year. I think we kind of aligned with what they came up with this year with charter reform and they would say stuff for charter reform, like if the state gave somebody like an exemption, that we would still get the money from the state. Like the person gets exemption, but it doesn't affect the school, the school would still get the money from the state. So we won't be penalized for that. Like I said, it's very wordy, so I don't, it would be a lot to go through all of this, but I thought I'd just maybe send this to you and you guys can read over it and see if there's anything that we would like to come up for next year. Because like I said, I didn't vote for any of these things, the only thing we vote for in October is if they have like a word or two that they want to change, we vote on the wording of, you know, one sentence here, one sentence there. So it's, at that point, there's nothing, you can't propose anything new. You're just voting on little tiny changes.
Great, okay, any questions? Okay, thank you, good report. And unfortunately, I was not able to be there, so thank you for covering it fully for us, appreciate it. Okay, Director Murray, IU 13?
No additional report other than to just say we're still really lacking some staff over there, so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Change order committee?
No report.
Excellent.
I'm gonna chime in though. I know. There is a change order, we believe, coming for the committee, it'll be substantial. If you notice the auxiliary, where the auxiliary gym wall was taken down, it is currently a very bright blue and gold that has been painted over and over and over again for years. It's not going to be able to stay that way. So they're coming up with a plan to do something on that side of the building. In all likelihood, it will also involve signage that says Northern London Secondary Schools with our logo or something on it too, that, because when you pull in, that's what you're gonna see. But they're gonna have to do something with that and it's, and it's not going to be, it's not something you can just paint over, it's gotta be a little more complicated than that. So we're gonna hit right here at the end, probably our last, certainly, I think our last certainly for the committee, but in the most likelihood, one of our last change orders, which we're still under and that's good, but we use more contingency this time, which renovation, he thought, it was pretty, it was a pretty good projection by Crabtree and Fidavia on the, on the contingency, so.
All right, well, Director Fowler, looking forward to an extensive report.
I'm gonna wait until 2025 so we can go the whole year.
Great, okay, thank you. All right, informational items, I would just like to note that the Act 93 is up for renewal this year, so we do need to form a committee. If any of the directors are interested in being a part of that committee, please let me know and I will appoint you, otherwise, I will appoint you. Great, thank you. All right, dates to remember, you, you heard from Dr. Messinger that we do have reorg meeting, 5:30 on the 2nd with our regular meeting to follow, that is the only meeting for December. Anything else?
Barry, can I just say, the Drama Club did an amazing job at the ball play. Excellent, excellent, the crew, just, yeah, I mean, it was very, very well done, so.
Yeah, it was very good.
Yeah.
Well done, yep, thank you. Anything else? Okay, that's it then for the business for this meeting, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Director Blau, second? Thank you, Director England, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate with an "aye" or "yes."
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.